The input into the plan is our space standards. Space standards are necessary from a planning perspective as they enable facilities to utilize the personnel quantities that are provided by the departments at the future time horizons that we ask, and then calculate how that space will then impact what needs to be built. And it matters because not every position in the county is created equal. For example, a field team member may need only a touchdown space, which is now in our space projections, or space standards of about 15 square feet, whereas a technical plans examiner may need a large workstation of 80 square feet. And so at different types of job categories or different space needs, we're able to set standards so we can plan accordingly. During the 2021 FMP update, all of our space standards were assessed and compared to industry standards, and a few additional categories were added to ensure a maximum flexibility in our planning. One final major input into the process is to look at our existing stock of buildings. And this was done by conducting a high-level evaluation of the buildings and their major components such as roofs, building envelope, MEP systems. There are over 500 buildings in our inventory, and this includes everything from a bus shelter to a parks maintenance facility, to a library, to a fire station, or to larger buildings such as government centers, or our single largest facility, the detention center. When we evaluated these buildings by quantity, our overall facility score was a 3.78 out of 5, or a C grade. However, that weighs all buildings basically the same. A maintenance shed is not necessarily the same as a courthouse. But when we evaluate buildings on a square footage basis, our score is 4.18 out of 5, or a B grade. This means that we put a greater degree of effort into maintaining our larger, more public-facing buildings, and is a decent level of maintenance, as our facilities are not really Class A office spaces, which would necessitate the higher degree of maintenance investment. So a B grade is just about right for government facilities. Next, this then leads, all of that information kind of culminates to these projections. And this slide I'm going to hover on for a little bit, because this is really where the rubber meets the road. And so I'm going to try to explain all of this in a little more detail. And so the first column is the department or major constitutional office, or division of county government or constitutional office, excuse me. The second column is the amount of square foot that that division, that branch, or that constitutional office currently occupies in totality. So we'll go the first row, the executive. The executive group is the Board of County Commissioners, the County Administrator, the County Attorney. That executive group currently occupies 29,720 square feet. And then we have multiple columns that are highlighted in multiple colors.
Someone took 2,000 of our feet, and we wanted that. What happened there? Did you see that?
No, let me explain. So the DG SF 2022, DG SF means Department gross square feet. These are the ones that are colorized are estimates of the square footage need based on the space standards. So what this tells me, if you're in green, you currently meet the required space for that particular group. If you're in yellow, you're within 10,000 square feet of that group, or of that measurement. And if you're in red, you're below by more than 10,000 square feet of what you need as far as space. So what this tells me, the 27,000 means that's the amount of space in 2022 that you technically needed, but you currently occupy 29,000 square feet. So it's actually the opposite. You have 2,000 more square feet than technically.
And we're keeping it.
Okay. Good, because you need it in the future. And so by 2026, the math tells me that you need 28,000 square feet. By 2031, you need 30,000. By 2036, 31,000. By 2041, 33,000. And so that's the way this sort of works across the board for each different group. And so the colorization tells me who needs the most square footage added to their inventory right now. And so Development Services currently occupies 38,000 square feet, but they need 47. By 2041, they'll need 66. What the short term, when I say short term, let's say through 2022, 2026, that short-term need will be resolved with the addition of the old Rasmussen Building, also known as Citizen Center, to support that Development Services.
That's not in these numbers?
That's not in these numbers.
Okay.
Yep. So many of these, and we're going to get to this here in a little bit, are all, many of the short-term needs are already in process. Where our biggest needs are going to be are in the medium term to long term. Fire rescue is at 217,000. By 2022, they would need 239,000. By 2041, 574,000. Again, the projects that we have in the pipeline right now, all of the fire stations that are in design or that are coming online within this next year, that will support all of that near-term deficit. For Internal Services, the current need is, our current occupation is 247,000. The need is 238 by 2022, and by 2041, 286,000. Public Infrastructure, 318,000 is the current occupation, 337 is what's needed. This is an area where there are two major projects underway. Nottingham is what we call the Public Infrastructure Project going on up in, near the Waste Energy Plant, which will support our road and bridge and project management teams. We'll talk about this more. But that project, along with an expansion of our East McKendry Site for Utilities, will help to support the deficits in this area. Public Services currently has 260,000 square feet of occupation, and they need 259 in 2022, and by 2041, 395. Detention Center currently occupies 637,000 square feet, and by 2041, will need almost 1.1 million square feet. The near-term will be resolved, again, they're in red right now, but the near-term is being resolved by the addition that we're working on right now. For the Constitutional, the Clerk and Comptroller currently occupy 76,000 square feet. They technically need, by our calculation, 69,000 square feet, and by 2041, 79,000 square feet. The Judicial Group, which is made up of the courts admin, the judges, the public defender, and the state's attorney, currently occupies 194,000 square feet, but they need currently today 228,000, and by 2041, 324,000. This is an area that we do not have anything really in the pipeline in a major, significant way to relieve this space deficit. The Sheriff's Office currently occupies 188,000 square feet. By our calculations, they should be occupying 173,000 by 2022, and by 2041, 223. There are a few, there is a notation there, there are a few new buildings related to the Sheriff's First Area, and some of the buildings that occurred during the transition with the Detention Center, which need to be added to the future calculus for this area.
Can I ask you a question on that one?
Sure.
So does that, and that does not include then the Rasmussen Building?
That also does not include the Rasmussen Building. But there will be a subtraction, that.
Because we're going to.
Yeah.
Take out.
It'll almost be a wash.
Okay. And the First Building, is that a county building? County-owned building?
The First Buildings are county-owned buildings, yes, ma'am. The sheriff cannot own property or buildings, and so even though they might be constructing them through grant dollars that they've been able to achieve, they ultimately then get transferred to the county.
Okay, and what about the Child Protection? Is that a building, the new one they got? Is that a building or just a program?
Their Child Protective Services is in a leased facility in Council Square, which is across.
Okay, no, I said wrong. The Center for, okay, is Chase here? Is anyone here for the Sheriff's?
I don't think they're here today.
So they got an allocation two years ago to build a new center like First kind of, but the Center for Missing and Exploited Children.
Yes, that will be near the First Area off of Charles Bowe Harrison Way, near where the Canines are. That'll be built in that same area.
And I did talk to the sheriff and his folks about working with us on having a plan for a layout of their campus, because they haven't really, we haven't, I don't, I'm not sure how much we work together on that, do you?
We do participate with them, and I should be able to show you something here in this presentation.
Okay.
That'll give you a fairly good representation. There might be small modifications, but a fairly good representation.
Okay.
Continuing on, Property Praiser currently occupies 16,000 square feet. The information we calculated says they should be occupying about 18,000, and by 2020, 2041, excuse me, 25,000 square feet. We have expanded some of their offices in Land O' Lakes and Newport Ritchie already, so these areas that you see in red are probably, if I redo the calculus, are probably already been resolved. Supervisor of Elections is at 35,000 square feet, almost 36, and they're exactly what they need for 2022 time horizon, and by 2041, they'll need 58,000 square feet. Tax Collector currently occupies 61,000 square feet, and at the 2022 time horizon, needs 63,000 square feet, so they're pretty close. And by 2041, though, will need about 110,000 square feet. We will be, in fact, it's kicked off at the beginning of this month, the West Pasco Government Center will be, his area in the West Pasco Government Center on the first floor will be expanded, and then he's also looking at a new facility that we'll talk about here in just a little bit.
Before you leave this charge.
Sure.
Ms. Starkey.
Just looking at the clerk and the judicial, I'm wondering if you might want to help out your fellow, you know, judges.
Since I am not the elected clerk.
I know you're not, but.
Feel comfortable in this.
Bringing that up, there's 7,000 feet there that maybe could be, you know, helping somebody.
Do you know that the layout of the building is, it might be difficult, because I'm not certain, you know, state attorney, public defender up on the second floor. I'm not certain, but I'll take that back to the clerk.
Okay. Finally, the Department of Health currently occupies 57,000 square feet, and they're estimated to have 58,000 square feet in 2022, and will need 68,000 square feet by 2041. The property that we just purchased to consolidate their operations up on 54, excuse me, 52, between Little Road and US 19, what we call the Summit Building, will be coming online later this summer, and that will resolve their west-side needs and their near-term needs. But in the long term, we'll need to expand their capabilities on the east side of the county. So that is the projections, which then, those projections then, again, I've summarized them down up to the branch level here for this presentation, but we have them down to every single building, every single department, so that we really can plan at a granular level. So what that then leads us to is to start to work with our consultants to put together a program. And I've broken this program down into the major highlights of what would occur over the next 15 to 20 years. And so for courts, again, the judiciary, court admin, public defender, state's attorney, clerk of court, operational side, and the guardian ad litem, they would like to move into a consolidated criminal court at the central criminal, or at the Land O' Lakes Public Safety Campus. Then the east and west courthouses would be repurposed to become exclusively used for civil court cases, and the state's attorney has an immediate need for expansion. They're the group that is most pinched right at this very moment, and one of the Liberty Professional Buildings will be utilized to support their expansion. For the Sheriff's Office, the long-range need is for an administration building, again, on the Land O' Lakes Public Safety Campus. You're going to hear that campus referred to multiple times over this presentation, and we'll talk about it here in just a little bit. The new, they'll also need a new Trinity District Office and a Fleet Operations Garage, also to be located on the Public Safety Campus. For the Tax Collector, again, they will be.
Wait, I'm sorry, you said the new Trinity District Office would be located where?
New Trinity District Office would probably be located in the same place, just expanded.
Okay, because you said the Public Services Campus, but.
That was for the Fleet Operations Garage.
Okay.
The Fleet Operations Garage would be on the Public Safety Campus.
Oh, yeah. Well, I've seen the trucks all under the trees over there in the grass.
The Tax Collector, they want to add an office location somewhere in the Lutes area, Gunn Highway, State Road 54, and then again, like I mentioned, the West Pasco Government Center offices will be expanded. The Property Praiser has had expansion in Land O' Lakes, Newport Ritchie. The Supervisor of Elections will begin construction in, for an expansion of their area in the Dade City Technology Center, and that will also ensure that we include spaces in all of our libraries for voting to occur. Department of Health, their larger location will be necessary in Wesley Chapel in the longer term, and for other Constitutional's and BCC departments, there was an idea that was floated as part of this master planning exercise to consider something that we're calling citizen service locations. These would be the most essential services that many departments offer, and having all of those co-located, think a bank building that might not offer every service that we provide, but just maybe the top 10, so that we're in the community a little bit more and make it more accessible for our citizens. For Development Services, we need to continue to expand all services on the west side. This will include utilizing the vacated space in the West Pasco Government Center after the move into the Rasmussen Citizen Center Building, and then consider citizen service locations as well for this group. For Internal Services, a new EOC 911 facility would be located on the Public Safety Campus, a new facility central office warehouse, that's in the design phase currently, a new centralized records facility would also be located on the Public Safety Campus, and then we would consolidate the IT functions that are kind of spread out in multiple locations on the west side of the county. For Public Services, the recommendation is for a new PCPT or Go Pasco building that would be added to the Galen Wilson Campus, and then we would utilize the vacated spaces from PCPT to then expand admin, community services, community development on the west, or the Galen Wilson Campus. We would also relocate Human Services to Youth Lane, this has actually taken place, and then relocate misdemeanor probation to the Liberty Complex. For Public Infrastructure, again, we talked about the Nottingham locations and McKendry locations, as their opportunities for expansion and growth, and then for our Public Safety Branch, we, the plan recommends to consolidate Fire Rescue Administration, billing, community risk, logistics, and training onto the Public Safety Campus, and then to continue to expand the Detention Center based on our population increases. These population increases were calculated by our consultants using statistical models based on our population trends, other trends throughout the state, and also our average daily population and our incarceration rates currently. And so what they're recommending is that our average daily population by 2041 will be 2,881, and our incarceration rate will be at 3.52 per thousand.
Andrew, when is the Fleet at Nottingham expected to be done?
The, well, Fleet at Nottingham is just a portion of the Nottingham project. Nottingham will include all of Public Works. Our sign shop, project management will also be relocated in Nottingham along with Fleet. That project is in the design phase right now, and will probably begin construction probably somewhere around the first of the year in 2024, and I would anticipate probably an 18 to 24 month, it's a pretty extensive facility out there, construction phase.
Okay. Thank you.
So I mentioned the Public Safety Campus a lot here, and this, Commissioner Starkey, is our best effort to try and map out all of these current sites, and this is where that idea of what will first look like. This is that same campus, so let me draw your attention just to orient here. This road here is US 41. This road going straight back and kind of curving is what we call Central Boulevard. That is the road that leads back to the jail now. And so let me start at the back of the campus where the jail is. So the current jail is 43. 42 and 41 will be the future expansion of the jail. 40 will be the additional expansions that we're anticipating into the future. If you come down the road, Central Boulevard, just a little bit more, you'll see a road that heads south. That road that heads south will be called Foundations Way. 49 will be the new facilities warehouse for the central area of the county, and this 50, 52 area, that will be the Fire Rescue Training Center. As we come back up to Central Boulevard and work our way a little bit further west down central, then we'll go north, and we'll follow it north along what's called Lucy Dobie's Way, and you'll see a cluster of buildings up here that are 38, 37, 36, 34, 33, 31. That cluster of buildings is a lot of the back-of-the-house support functions for the sheriff. Their ag unit is back there, the helicopters are back there, some of their heavy equipment is back there, and so those buildings are sort of support to the Sheriff's Department. And if you come back then, down south along Lucy Dobie's, then meander east past the K-9, you're on Charles Bowe Harrison Way, you'll move past the K-9. 23 would be where that new, that new Victims Advocacy Building that you were mentioning, Commissioner Starkey, that's where that would pretty much land. 25 is the Barnado Center.
Who's going to work in that building?
I would have to verify that with the Sheriff's Department. I don't know. 25 is the Barnado Center, which will be the, which will be the new Forensics Building for the Sheriff's Department. 26, 27, 28, 30, 29, this is all of what is considered to be First, and so all of those buildings are related to the First Program. As we come back down and go back to Central Boulevard and meander west further down Central Boulevard, these two buildings to the north here, 15 would be a Fleet Facility, is where we're envisioning that to land. There's the potential for that to maybe be a shared-use facility with the Sheriff's Department, that's still being discussed. 14 is a clerk's records facility that would support court operations, and then 13 is where we expect to land the new Central Criminal Courthouse. It's shared with a very large parking area, and that's designed on purpose, because 12 would be the new Public Safety Administration Building. It would also contain our new EOC, our 911. This would be a multi-story building, I know it looks like a smaller footprint there. This would be a multi-story building that would contain all of those features and functions. And then during activation, the courthouse is typically closed, so the sharing of that parking lot, when that facility, the emergency-type facility usually has a surge in parking need, that would be able to support that and do that most effectively. 11 would be a warehouse to support emergency operations. If we go up, you'll see there's a road here that is called Symphony Boulevard. We expect Symphony Boulevard to bisect our campus and then drift up to the north for a future development up there. So then at the, what would be Central Boulevard and Symphony, at the northwest corner of those two connectors, would be the future Sheriff Admin Building, is what we're proposing. If we come down, 9 and 10, 9 is our current Utility Administration Building. We see that one growing into the future with a new environmental lab and some additional office space for utility administration. As we come up, there is the new Visitation Center at 6. 7 is envisioned to be one of those citizen service centers, and then 4 is the new fire station.
So who, who is the master planner of this? Do we have a professional doing this, or are we doing it ourselves?
So we enlisted the assistance of Ferr Wegman Banks and Carter Global Lee, CGL, to assist with this presentation.
And what, were there, I mean, was there any goal to, to have a downtown or to enhance the experience for all the people working there?
So this is, on a public safety campus, we have divided this campus into sort of three zones. There's zone, what we call the public zone, which would be pretty much what I'm highlighting right now, and that would, that zone would stop pretty much right at the courthouse. Then there's the private zone, which includes the sheriff facilities, and then there's the secure zone, which is the jail. They're really, once you pass this point right here, there really won't be public access. This is not really a downtown-centric area. This is, this is the support facilities for public safety.
Okay, so there are going to be a lot of people working right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Where's lunchtime for them?
Down US 41, there's.
So they got to get in their car and they got to drive down the road?
Yes, ma'am.
When we have this humongous campus with thousands of people working there, I think it's very short-sighted and a little sad. That's, I think we can do better. I mean, when I'm here, when I'm at my office, and I see, I see our staff walking around the parking lot for exercise, that is not a forward-thinking, this is, I think we can do better. That's just what I want to say. And if you can have a better experience.
I think what you see here is the layout for the need, and that's what Andrew is expressing.
Yeah, and I get the need, and I'm all, and I'm so glad that we're planning for it. I just would like us to be a little more creative in how, in our placements. So we create a sense of place and not just buildings plop down wherever there seems to be an open spot. That's, that's my thought.
Understood. We can take that back surely, as we, again, where we are, this is the 100,000-foot level in a design exercise, so we are, we are not down to the placemaking sort of decision. This is just trying to envision that we have these needs and we have this square footage. Where could that fit?
Yeah.
On property that we already own. This may not be the exact placement, and it's certainly not the final design.
Great. Well, I would just ask that we just put a little more thoughtful planning into it, so we create a place that is a great place to work.
Absolutely.
An enhancement to the community, and a, you know, a destination more than just a bunch of parking lots randomly placed and.
I think Commissioner Starkey brings a very good point that we should look at. I mean, if you take a look at the county building now over in Newport Ritchie, you've got no food available except for a guy with a hot dog truck, right?
With in a cup, perhaps.
Not, not, not a good look for us. You take, Land O' Lakes years ago had a building with a restaurant in our own commercial building, made a lot of sense, the people that wanted to eat there, they could stay right there, none of them drive out and around. We should be able to find space in there for something where it's easy accessible to get to. I like the trail idea too, where people can walk to back and forth.
Yeah, you could have a park with parking for food trucks, you know, food truck court, something, something.
Absolutely.
Just something better.
Tallahassee, the PSC building they have up there, they've got, they've got a cafeteria, I'm not looking to get a cafeteria, they're going to have someone privately run it, let the expense go, let them pay us rent, especially if it's going to be sitting, this plan's going to take a long time to do, so all that time you could. plan's going to take a long time to do, so all that time you could actually be making money on it. So change it for later on anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, all of those are on the table at this point. This is just trying to plan for the needs of our departments, not necessarily get into the design of those particular buildings, but we can absolutely consider those things when we get to that phase.
How many more slides do you have?
Two more.
Two more? All right.
Maybe three more.
Why don't we do this real quick because I won't have a little, we'll probably have more conversation later on, but our guest of honor is here. So Commissioner Simpson, you want to wait? Okay, all right, go ahead and finish up. As long as he's comfortable.
All right. All right, so then all of those big plans ultimately need a, a phasing plan associated with them because there's a lot of asks and a lot of need over the next 15 to 20 years. So we've tried to break that down into a, a phasing plan over a 15 year time period that I'm going to share with you. This is not exact. There's still room for, for what I call targets of opportunity. If we see a building that, you know, is, would be cheaper for us to buy and it's in the right location, that could be moved up in this schedule. So everything in this one to five year time horizon already has funding behind it and in fact, many of them are already under design. And so that takes us out to 2027. And so over the next five years, we'll be building about $188 million, almost $190 million of, of new facilities. Years six to 10 and 10 to 15 or 11 to 15 are where the difficulties arise from a funding perspective. And so none of these projects going from years six to 10 and forward are funded at this point. And so the major projects in these phases include things like four new fire stations, a central criminal courthouse, the consolidated public safety administration, fire rescue operations building, the record center, and an additional 588 bed jail expansion are all in this six to 10 year time horizon. And that totals between 417 to 466 million dollars in infrastructure needs. In years 11 to 15, the major projects in this phase include three new fire stations, the second phase of the criminal courthouse, a new PSO administration building, and an additional 951 bed jail expansion. All of this has a price tag of between 300 to 333 million dollars associated with it. And so the funding for these large capital investitures so that we can continue to provide services for the citizens of Pasco County is the, is the challenge and opportunity that we all face. And so with that, those are, that's the presentation of the facilities master plan. Any questions?
Commissioner Rockley, I just had one thing and maybe you've discussed it, but what about BCS as far as the permitting services here in the east side of Pasco because right now we're starting to grow leaps and bounds in the permitting office. It's still what it is over here. Is there room for expansion of that for the future or?
The current development services area in the East Pasco Government Center has adequate capacity to expand for the future.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Starkey.
Can you go back to the, the earliest one? No, no. The first one to five.
Sure.
Where is the, okay, so the new tax collector office of Desa Trinity?
Yeah, that's.
Do we ever like privatize any of this? So can someone build a building and then lease it to us?
We have had those opportunities presented to us in the past. Typically when we do the, it really is a funding matter. Typically we've been able to self-fund those projects and in the long term, that is a, a cheaper solution for us than leasing again a facility when there's typically an upcharge on that lease.
Or lease option?
Yeah. It's something we can consider though for future expansions if, if that is a, if that is the desire.
Yeah, the team is consistently looking at the lease versus buy option. They, they, we make these as business decisions.
Yeah. I, I didn't realize where our engineers, their engineering department is. Do you guys know where that is? It is, is it an old jail?
That was the Pasco County Building, actually. Literally it was called the Pasco County Building. It included everything. It was the courthouse, it was the jail, it was the government center.
So when was that built? When was that building built?
I believe that building was built in either the late 40s, early 50s. Are you talking the one in Newport Ritchie?
It is across the street from the West Pasco Board of Realtors Office?
Yeah.
It's just in such a bizarre place in downtown Newport Ritchie. Are we going to move that?
That will be moved to the Nottingham Facility, which is currently under design. Everything there, along with public works, engineering, project management, sign shop, everything that, that's in that realm will move to our Nottingham Facility.
And what will we do with that building in Newport?
That's still TBD.
I'm a fan of owning the properties that we're going to build on. I know we've had some situations where we had rapid expansion, we rented out like Trouble Creek, we stole a lot of crews down there. It's not at high rent, but it's, I think, much more efficient for the long term to have our own buildings and not have to be subject to what rent charges may go with land prices going up.
I'm going to agree with that, yes. It's the right thing to do.
When, when we do that analysis, like County Administrator was stating, we, we do do that lease buy analysis and it typically works out in favor for us to buy.
When you save out interest costs and rent costs, upcharges, it's pretty simple.
So on any of these here, I'm looking at the, the Go Pasco. I've seen other counties get federal grants for some of those. Are we going after that, County Administrator?
Yes, with, with, we're, we're in the process here of hiring a grants manager, as I told you before, centralizing grants and so we'll, we'll be chasing federal money to, to back up everything at every opportunity. And we've, we've got actually on some of the public safety campus stuff, Congressman Bill Rakus's office has been very helpful in helping us get some, you know, some initial seed money. So we're, we're very hopeful on that too. So we, we continue to explore those avenues.
And on any of this one to five, you say most of this is funded? It doesn't say here what the light green and the dark green represents?
I apologize, I did not explain that. The light green is sort of the design side of that project and the dark green is the construction side of that project.
And all these are funded?
Except for the Go Pasco Building, I would say all of those are funded and maybe the tax collector, he's still thinking how he's going to probably self-fund that one.
Well, I hope we don't fund the Go Pasco because that needs to be a federal grant. We shouldn't be looking at doing that ourselves.
Well, I'm happy to say Mr. Carballo is looking at all sorts of grants right now. He's got, putting a team together. So the approach that we didn't go after many grants and didn't have success, I think that's going to be changing. So I'm optimistic about that. Any other questions for Andrew?
Good.
Need a motion to approve? No motion?
No motion.
I wouldn't approve it with that layout.
All right, we'll close out item now. Our guest of honor and his family is here with him. Fantastic. Commissioner?
Almost, almost didn't recognize him.
Mr. Simpson, please come forward.
And your family can come up behind you.
They want to join you? Okay. Good morning. This is resolution number 23 dash 126. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida honoring Wilton Simpson for his dedication and service to the citizens of Pasco County. Whereas Wilton Simpson, Florida's 13th Commissioner of Agriculture and a fifth generation Floridian, oversees the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. Commissioner Simpson understands the challenges faced by Florida's farmers and will guide the department in functions such as protecting the environment, ensuring the availability, affordability, and safety of our food supply and protecting Florida consumers. And whereas from 2012 to 2022, Commissioner Simpson served as a member of the Florida Senate and was elected Senate President for the 2020 to 2022 term. Commissioner Simpson, while serving as Senate President through a worldwide pandemic, fought to keep Florida open and free and to ensure that Florida was a beacon of hope, opportunity, and freedom for generations to come. And whereas seeing a need in the community, Wilton Simpson and his wife Kathy founded the Simpson Breast Health Center to ensure women had the care they deserved at a time when they deserved it the most. The Simpson Breast Health Center at Advent Health Zephyr Hills is led by an independent team of board certified physicians and provides some of Florida's most advanced diagnostic imaging technology for breast cancer with a full spectrum of breast care services. And whereas Wilton Simpson is an advocate for the PACE Center for Girls and he has worked for policies and resources for PACE's mission to equip girls and young women across our state with the opportunity for a better future through education, counseling, training, and advocacy. And whereas the Moffitt Cancer Center honored Wilton Simpson for his long-term standing commitment to Moffitt's mission and his legacy of supporting the growth of the scientific community for the benefit of all Floridians. And his dedication to the Spiros FL Project by the naming of Wilton Way and the first 75 acres of the development as the W.E. Simpson Concourse for Cures. And whereas Wilton Simpson donated 1.7 acres of land for cares, community aging, and retirement services for a 6,000 square foot senior center in Date City, Florida, helping to protect the dignity and the individuality of each senior by making a healthy, safe, and beautiful environment for them. And whereas learning what it meant to be part of a team from his time on the football field in that old Pasco Pirates jersey, Wilton Simpson understands that our problems are real, the stakes are high, and the solutions require someone who knows how to roll up his sleeves and get the job done. Woven into every honor and achievement are the triumphs, tragedies, and truly incredible stories of hardworking Floridians Wilton Simpson has fought for with the goal of helping others achieve their American dream. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby honors Wilton Simpson for his advocacy, philanthropy, and leadership in the community by his dedication and service to the citizens of Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting the sixth day of June 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Rockley.
Can't believe it's this time. You don't look old enough to have done all these things we're looking at on this paper. But really you've done a great job and served your county, your city and, you know, he does live in my district, you know, that's.
I was wondering if that might come out.
But we, we have greater expectations for you in the future, so we're, we're not letting you retire or step aside, even though Kathy says it's enough. But you've now moved in your new home in my district. And your children are going to move in their new home in my district. And now we're both just called commissioners, so we're equal now instead of you being oppressed. So, but Wilton, I, I cherish your friendship. I love and care for your family as though they were mine. I just can't say enough of all the things you've done for Pasco County and certainly want to thank you for, for every little bit. Just keeps going. We'll keep working together and achieve a lot, so. And thank you for all you do. Would you like to speak?
Well, hang, hang on for just a second.
Yeah, all of us want to say something.
The accolades.
We got a pile on you.
Yeah. Good job, Rockley. It's amazing to see the work that you've done and how it's going to carry on to another generation like myself, your kids, your grandkids, my kids. The work that you've done as Senate President, what you're leading the way in agriculture community and just the state of business in our state is phenomenal. And it's an honor to, whenever you decide to retire, hopefully some of us will still be around to pick up where you've left off, carry the torch, and continue to make our home and our state the best place to live and raise a family and, and have success. So thank you for being here today.
Commissioner Starkey.
And, and I would like to add on. You know, when we had some others in the Senate that were reluctant to file for appropriations, we, we could always count on Senator Simpson and now Commissioner Simpson. And he carried a lot for us that I think a lot of people in this county don't realize. So we are very appreciative. You saw what our needs are here in the county and, and they're, they're big and, and so all your help that you gave us during that time was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Ms. Carballo?
From an administrator's perspective, your, your, your team and yourself have just been fantastic to work with and I really appreciate all the support that you've given to the county. You've really helped us, you know, get a lot of things done, which is, which is great. And, and we continue to really want to move things along economically and, and infrastructure wise. It's, it's just been a phenomenal partnership, so we thank you for all of that.
I'd like to say Commissioner that you've been, I think, the most impactful elected official that Pasco County's ever had. And it's not that just resonates how you do great things in just the east side of the county, you do great things on the west side of the county. Your overall thinking benefits the entire state in such a great way that I think is the reason we're the best state to live in. You know, your dedication just every step of the way, the honors you get at Moffitt, well, well deserved. And my daughter Amber loved working with you. Your mentorship with her was phenomenal. Getting stuff done with PACE Center for Girls meant so much to her. Metropolitan Ministries as well, another one that you helped drive along to help people that needed. The dedication of the CARE Center was just some, so impactful for the seniors out there that need the care. So everything you've done has been for the betterment of all. And your, your logic, your wisdom, your smarts has really just been tremendous leadership. And Kathy, I hate to say this, but I think there's better things still coming. Commissioner?
Thank you. Well, I should just say thank you and leave the room. It can only go down from here. But it was such an honor to, to serve the last 10 years in the Florida Senate and be the Senate President during the pandemic and, and keeping Florida open and getting our kids back in school, getting, making sure our businesses were able to run and, and operate. And when you think about the things that we did through those two years, you know, we, that we don't normally talk about, the Wildlife Corridor exists today. It was one of my major priorities that we had of, you know, my last two years as president. And we put, you know, this last year, a billion dollars nearly into helping take down that Wildlife Corridor. And a lot of times we don't always appreciate those things. And if you think about what is the Wildlife Corridor? If you Google a map of the state of Florida at nighttime, on a clear night, you will see all the beautiful lights that make up Florida. Everywhere it's dark is the Wildlife Corridor. Everywhere it's dark is where we grow our food, we charge our aquifer, and it's an area that has to be preserved or needs to be preserved for all of those reasons. And then to be elected Commissioner of Agriculture is clearly an honor of lifetime. And, and you know, part of that Wildlife Corridor fits right into, you know, obviously fits hand in glove with your agriculture. Two weeks ago at our cabinet meeting, we approved $70 million, almost 40,000 acres of land to be preserved in the state of Florida. In this year's budget, there's 30, over $30 million to preserve 1,000 acres in the West Loop Chapel area, something we're looking forward to seeing finish up here pretty soon. There is, when you think about Moffitt, Moffitt is going to revolutionize cancer care in the world. The research facility they're building there will not only bring thousands of jobs to our area of the state, but the world, the world will travel to the Tampa Bay area now to receive cancer. There we do, but more will as this center comes online. Another major priority and, and I'm glad they're breaking ground. In two or three years, I think we'll have some of the first buildings open. And when you think of all the other little things, the stuff for Date City and Zephyr Hills, we're going to have an armory, a brand new armory in, in Zephyr Hills, Florida. And you think about the, the county itself and Metropolitan Ministries and how we handle our homeless, all of those things were critical to be part of, of part of being in the Senate, Senate President. And now as ag commissioner, you know, it's all about safe, affordable, abundant food, making sure our food supply remains robust in this country, but in the state in particular. And so it's a real honor to be here today. Thank you for this resolution and I want to thank my family, obviously they've been here the whole time. And, and Kathy, I think has got me now having to retire now a few years. I mean, I've had, I think, three years and about six months left. I mean, I think three years and about six months left. And, um, but anyways, it's been a real honor to serve. It's a real honor to be in this community, growing up here in Trilby, and, um, and it's really been from the football field to the Senate Presidency. So, thank you all, and thank you for the resolution.
Thank you.
Wait, we're gonna take a photo.
Yeah, we're gonna come down, have a picture. We're gonna go to take a picture.
I took my photo game in the bathroom. We're gonna do two separate.
Oh, two separate?
Yep. You didn't mention trails.
Uh, forgot about that.
One, two, three.
Right, right here. One, two, three. Perfect.
And then family? Everyone look at me, I'm gonna have two separate photos, so.
Until you get it right, I'll give you the picture. Thanks.
Well, well done, Commissioner Oakley. Glad you brought that forward.
Do what?
I'm glad you brought your resident forward to have that award.
Oh, my goodness. It's hard to imagine how much has happened during his term and legislature and all this gotten done.
No, it's been fantastic.
Actually, he was very instrumental in the, when I was at Swiftland, I started thinking about the water line connecting a regional system to connect Zephyr Hills and Date City with water. Wilton and also Will Weatherford got the funds, $9 million to have that line put in on the east. It's on the east side of 301 connecting Date City and Zephyr Hills and their water. So, it's, it was a great thing.
Think about that, only $9 million.
Yeah. But it got done through the state, so.
That's been amazing. I mean, subject to sewer programs, preserving agricultural land for future development, from future development to keep the food source going, so just amazing accomplishments.
Oh, that's true.
All right, committee reports. Commissioner Oakley.
Okay.
From the largest district in the county.
Yeah, my half of the county. But we'll start off at, um, here we have the soft opening for the library here for Hugh Embry Library, and we, um, had this, and it's pretty amazing that here we are talking about the remodeling of all of, of the Hugh Embry Library. Yesterday, we got word, Ralph put it out, I guess, that the Pasco Libraries System organized as Library of the Year by Florida Library Association. So you gotta be really proud of our libraries association and the library that we have throughout the county. It really, I had a fellow tell me one time that libraries wasn't very important, we take that money and use it somewhere else. But let me tell you something, there's a lot of our citizens that depend on that library in whatever area or community you are. When you close one down like Hugh Embry, the phone ran off the hook for a long time for trying to get it back open so that they missed their library that much, so. And now it's back open. And a little later on, we'll have a ribbon cutting for that.
I almost think they shouldn't be called libraries, that they should be like community centers, something more than library. Because when you think of the old-school, you know, library books, but they do so much more than that, so.
Oh, they do. They really do.
I'd love for us to come up with a better name.
Yep. And we'll move on to, uh, last Friday, we had the New Lagoon. If you don't notice the pictures, uh, you can't get the total lagoon in a picture. It's 15 acres, so it's, it's quite large, and, uh, I'm blessed again, and in my district, I have the first lagoon in, in the nation, in the nation, first one in the nation in my district. And this is the second lagoon in the, not just second in the nation, but it, it's, it's not that at all. It's the first largest lagoon in the nation by 15 acres. It's a pretty amazing facility.
With the mermaid.
Costs a lot of time, and I, I won't go there, but, so, but yes, they had mermaids out there the other day, so, um, it was a very beautiful sight out there to have that relaxation. What? But, uh, it's actually beautiful.
That is beautiful.
Pretty amazing. I mean, there'd be 200,000 people coming and visit this lagoon, if you can imagine here in our county and, and here, and in your district.
You have to drive, you have to ride your bike to it.
Yep. But the reality is, it's pretty amazing. I didn't have to help turn the switch on or the valve on to get water in, but the first lagoon, the water had to be turned on, and it's more than just turn the valve open, because you had to maintain water pressure for safety and fire control at the time you were filling the first lagoon. But actually, we got it turned on the right time. Mike probably was a big part of that at that time, and his team got it turned on, and we maintained pressure throughout the system to where we didn't give up our safety for our homeowners in case of fire, for our safety, so.
This was this amazing first project, second project, and the time they took to listen to the people and go through everything and say, here's how we're gonna do it. When the concerns came up, they were able to show what they were gonna do, and then coordinate with our own utilities, which Mike being a part of, we did it all, they did it all, they did it all right, every step of the way.
Oh, yeah.
And it was just, and to see it come for a second one, I was sitting down with Karthik and Mike and saying, how does it feel to like create something as awesome as this? You've got to be proud of this.
Pretty awesome, yeah. And we as a county, definitely, we need to be proud of these lagoons, because they actually are a great amenity for, for the Marotta in Pasco County and also the other lagoon. Also, a lot of citizens have been at that one, and actually, you get a lot of visitors from Europe and all coming over here just to be near around these lagoons, so. Yep, so it's, it's really good. So, I went from there, I went to a Dell website over in Land O' Lakes, and because we've been discussing, you know, 40 and 50-foot lots, so these are 40s, 50s, and I think there's some 60s in here. And I was pretty amazed, look at the landscaping on these houses and, and the architectural view that you have on these. Now, this is a 55 and older property, so they either have one car, a car and a golf cart, and so, but they've done such a great job in architecture, and look at all the landscape. Some of these that have come in before don't have this kind, look at that landscape and the architecture of those houses. That's, I don't mind having 40s and 50s if I have that. I mean, really, that's, that's a beautiful home. And, uh, of course, 55 and older, a lot of single people that live here with one car and a golf cart, and there's some, there's couples. Some of them have a, uh, it's like a balcony area inside their house for when they have grandchildren and all, so. But, uh, very well done and a very nice product in, in our county. Actually, this one's in Land O' Lakes, and they're gonna be building one in Palmetto Ridge that's a Dell Web product that's coming in Palmetto Ridge.
And so in this kind of community, all the landscaping is maintained by one company?
Yes, all of it's done by one company. Yards mowed and everything else. They pay up, each homeowner pays a fee for their yard care and all, so. But you can see, it's very well done.
And it keeps it looking nice all the time. And, you know, when you get a senior community, those smaller lots, I think, are definitely much more acceptable. You don't need all the parking you do for a family.
Yeah.
If you drive down to some places, you'll see, they used to be like first seniors and then the young families moved in, and you got cars being parked on the grass all over, and it's a whole different world. But in a senior community, I think those 40s and 50s work. Uh, they got parking out front, so they do have more people, and there's not a lot of other things going on, so it does the community works. Their area where everybody goes in the central part is like amenities galore. Keep them all happy. There it is.
So, just absolutely just beautiful what you see in this, this product.
It's like a fun clubhouse.
Yep. They have a swimming pool, and they have, um, I guess they have times for children to be at the pool, but it's not when the adults are gonna be there. They have like a two- or three-hour slot in the afternoon, like from 2:00 to 5:00, and children can be there. Other times, just the adults are there, so. But it's, uh, very well done, very nice product. I look for more products like this, and would hope that we can get, uh, some more of these developments other than Dell Web and other than 55 and older. We need, we need this kind of product for our other homes that we have in developments. So we'll move on to, uh, next item we had was during the cleanup event in Zephyr Hills, they removed 70 tons of trash, tires, and, um, the code compliance and all solid waste public works in the city of Zephyr Hills conducted this cleanup. And 70 tons is a lot of stuff just laying around in yards, and I know Ms. Starkey, she knows that all the different areas that she goes to, there's a lot of tonnage that's laid out there and need to be picked up. And this was very successful to do this cleanup in Zephyr Hills. This, uh, was very good. And so thank you to all the volunteers and team members who made it possible for this cleanup, so. And I was trying to think, there was, uh, there's so much been going on, it seems like, uh, in the last few weeks I don't, I work since I got, uh, I got two assistants now instead of, uh, instead of just one, it seems like they've decided I need to work six days a week instead of just five. And I told, I had a meeting with them the other day, and I said, y'all gotta cut out the Saturdays on, because the three events I went to to speak, I only knew about one of them that I was supposed to speak at. And I mean, thank goodness I've been here six years to have the information to be able to cover it, but from giving a house to a veteran, to, uh, opening a new VA clinic in Zephyr Hills and other things, and then this with the lagoon, so you gotta be really thankful for all the things that have happened in our county. Actually, the veteran home was off Collier and in District 2, and, uh, but very nice that people give of land, actually, the land was donated and the Tours, um, the, uh, Tunnels to Tours Foundation is the one to present that home to the, to the veteran. Very welcome family to Pasco County, so very nice. So, with that, that's everything I have today.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Whitman.
Thank you, Chair. First, just gotta throw out there since Moore's in the room, go Bulls. Go Bulls. Um, obviously, we have a Senate President, so I'll give some love to former Speaker Will Weatherford, who's Chair of USF Board of Trustees, and this last week, USF entered the Association of American Universities, which is a big deal. And talk about regional impact and what that means. USF's just going, going to the next level. The best and brightest will go there, unlike UCF. It will continue, it will continue to, to pump up the, to pump up the green and gold, so. Thank you for indulging me, Mike Moore. So congratulations to USF and Chair Weatherford and, and everybody in the USF community. Next, we had a, we had our first town hall, it was in Lexington Oaks, and I'll thank Maxine Carlson and Jose and Cam for spearheading it and inviting us out. And, um, great conversation with the folks in Lexington Oaks. They're a really engaged group of people, and I put a picture of the sign, I think Commissioner Starkey would be proud of this sign, and, uh, did a good job of, of bringing this in and sharing their concerns. There's a, there's a lot of longevity in the Lexington Oaks community, so turnover of homeownership is seemingly pretty low. So those folks that live there have a lot of history within the community and a pretty fantastic perspective on, on things.
And they kept their oaks, unlike several oaks now, right? They took theirs.
So, anyway, thanks to the folks at Lexington Oaks for having us. Also, June 2nd was a, a special day, Pasco County's birthday, and so we have to recognize, recognize that. And do we have any, any other pictures up on air? Here we go. So Andy made us do this. Commissioner Oakley, you did a fantastic job kicking off the Marotta Lagoon event, and it's like you're in a totally different, totally different world. A fun way to kick off summer, a great crowd, and, uh, you know, a piece of information that was pretty interesting is that lagoon will hold up to 4,000 people, 4,000 guests. And then there's over a mile, approximately over a mile of shoreline around this pool. So, um, you know, just, just an amazing, uh, design and build there. So congratulations to everybody who stayed the course to get, get that project done. And I don't see anything else. Am I missing anything? We're good? All right, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Starkey.
Um, okay, let's see how my pictures roll. I have a lot of them. Okay, do you have the kids' collection first?
Yeah, I have a copy that he's.
Okay, so the first one I want to talk about is the kids' collection for the Oasis Pregnancy Center. Uh, thank you to everyone at the B.O.C.C. office for donating. Um, we had quite a collection of diapers and everything. Thank you, Jack, for coming, and we, we, here's our, our collection, and they were very grateful to receive all these, and we'll work on this again next year, and I have some ideas how to even publicize this even more. We had the annual community cleanup in Holiday Lake Estates on May 21st. I was at the NACO Board Meeting, so I, I missed it, but my staff went. Uh, we collected 36 tons of garbage, and thanks to all the staff that came out, we had to do it on a Sunday. Thank you to John Batista and Robert Pinneran and the solid waste team, to John Delandro and the road and bridge team, Christian Jaycox, environmental compliance team, and Patrick Ariton and co-compliance team, so, um, got a lot of stuff out of that neighborhood. Uh, and we had our Commission on Status of Women, had their inaugural Women uplifting Women event on May 23rd, and Derek's doing a great job with that, I'm very excited about what he's, what he's done there. And so, uh, they, uh, the Commission on Status of Women serves in advisory capacity to the Board of County Commissioners and county leadership with respect to matters pertaining to the status of women like discrimination, employment, education, and other vital topics. You can follow them on Facebook. One of the things I love is they're compiling a list of women-owned businesses for the county, so if you know any, please be sure and send that to me, and we'll get it onto them. So, if you know any, please be sure and send that to me and we'll get it onto them. Next, we have Bexley. Oh, this is even worse. So, Commissioner, no, our county administrator lives in Bexley. This is not your picture though, right? Because, okay, on one of this, on one of the streets, there's one builder on one side and another builder on the other side. And when I drove around, you know, I did my Dell Web in the morning. And then, the afternoon, I was with Willie Nunn's company, Homes by West Bay, and with Martin Frame of, gosh.
If you notice, there's no landscape.
Martin Frame. So, yes, with David Winkley. So, this is a very interesting street in Bexley. One side of the street has street trees and the other side does not. So, I made, you know, I pointed this out to our TBVA folks as we were driving through this neighborhood. And I got a call from our friends at Pulte and said, oh, whoops, yes, we are missing 180 trees in Bexley. We will put them in. And that's great, but how is it that we're missing 180 trees and we didn't know it? So, once again, I say, we have a process missing in that process. And going out there to meet Martin, I don't know if, did I send a picture of the townhomes in Wesley Chapel? Do you know? I sent that to Katie. I was.
Yeah, my picture's on.
Okay. So, I drove through a community in Wesley Chapel off of Mansfield. And there are like no trees. And so, I've asked for the copy of the plan to see what was supposed to be there. And then, we can compare it to what's there. And again, I think that's, that's not it because it's townhomes. That, yeah, I think that's what that is. I think that's the townhome community in, off of Mansfield. I can't remember the name of it. But you can see, I feel like something's missing there. And I'm pretty sure when they do their, get their development agreement, it has a requirement for X amount of trees. Okay, next picture. Keep going. Okay. So, then I, on my way to over there, I drove down Lake Patience Boulevard. So, to get there, you pass through Oakstead. And keep scrolling through because these aren't in order. I want you to get to the map. Okay. Oakstead and Lake Patience up here. You see where the green is, that's where the multi-use trail is. And it stops at the entrance to that last neighborhood in Oakstead. And it's right across the street from Oakstead Elementary, which by the way, has no sidewalk. But then, then you go, this dotted line, okay, now, now, keep going. Let me see what else you did here. There's a, keep going. I thought she showed where there was a sidewalk. Well, so these are two pictures of brand-new developments on Lake Patience Drive. One is a Homes for Rent by American Homes. And one is a, I think it's a Pulte project. And you see the right-of-way that we have. And my understanding, and someone here can correct me, but what I got from staff is that, Brad can explain this better than me. No. Tell me if I get this wrong. Lake Patience was in the five-year CIP, so there were kind of like eyes on it during development. Some, they did a route study and decided, okay, Lake Patience doesn't need to be four lane. It only needs to be two. And so, it fell out of some kind of review. And so, now, these neighborhoods just put in the five-foot sidewalk. So, we have the multi-use path coming from Oakstead that stops. There's a sidewalk over the bridge, then it stops. And then, we get a brand-new five-foot sidewalk that we will have to rip out to continue the multi-use trail, which is unfortunate. Did I say that right?
Rent and Planning and Development. Yes, that was actually a very good summary, given the complexity of it. Yeah, it was in the CIP. So, when projects like that are in the CIP, typically, a new project coming in will actually pay into the fund to help the county construct the project. So, that was what happened. And then, after those payments were made and it was mitigated for, the CIP was reprioritized and it fell out of the CIP. So, that, the sidewalks are actually there technically a little bit above and beyond because they've already paid in and have the county build the sidewalks in the future with the trail system and whatnot. So, yeah.
But those have to be ripped out. We're putting a multi-use trail down here, so those have to come out.
Yeah, they'll, they'll end up coming out.
When we could have had them build the path.
That was, that was a, just a perfect storm of timing with it being in the CIP and then coming out of the CIP. But those are the types of things that happen when we're prioritizing and reprioritizing road systems. Because these projects, you know, these are several years typically that these things can be approved.
So, but this just goes back to my conversation with administrator, that when we have no one in charge of the trails, we're making very costly mistakes. And it's very disjointed. And, you know, I know Keith is saying when they get their master trail, master parks planned and trails done, they can be the one. But they would never see this because this is not a park. And MPO doesn't want to look at this, doesn't get it. Somewhere, we're missing a person. And I really, really need you to get that person on board, that system on board.
Yeah, this goes back to discussions on mobility.
Because if it's, it's not on the MPO plan, then where does it fall? And right now, we've approved a whole bunch of money for Penny for Pasco coming up that's going to go to trails. Right on 5A Road.
Those are on the big trails, but.
No, but I'm going to get to this. On 5A, they had a development coming in. They were going to put a five-foot path in. Meanwhile, I know this year, it was supposed to be on the CIP to be done where the eight-foot or 10-foot wide multi-use trail was coming in. And these guys are laying it out to go five-foot. Called in, we looked at it. We got them to negotiate with us so that at least they build their part of the same amount of square footage concrete and put the trail in. So, it's there. We still got to connect it. Still got to rebuild it. But that was almost missed.
Yeah. So, if we're not going to build a four-lane road here, we're not, is that correct?
My understanding is that the last study that when the Tower Road to the north was changed.
So, who's maintaining all that grass there?
I believe that that is actually all dedicated to the county at this point.
Okay. So, now we have this big maintenance cost there. And so, why not take that area and turn it into a linear park? You know, do, do something with it that benefits the community.
Could potentially be a trailhead.
A trailhead or, you know, like a kids' playground. I don't know, something. But let's think bigger than than just having a big piece of land that we have to mow. Okay, I have, I have more. And then, I, yeah, thanks. Next picture. So, a number of years ago, Rick Baker, when I was involved with Tampa Bay Partnership, he gave me a book about building great cities. I went and read a chapter. And he highlighted a section that I should read, which is how North Carolina brought manufacturing back to its community. And one of the ways that they were very successful was when they were able to get one manufacturer back. Actually, it was in the textile industry. When he came to their community, he made them very, very welcomed. And they got him into that country club. And they made sure that he met people in the society, in the community. And then, that guy went and told all his buddies back in Italy, actually, what a great place that area was. And a bunch of them moved their companies there. So, I took that to heart with my international program. It's kind of part of how I started that international program at PEDC. And I take, take my international CEOs in manufacturing here in the community. I was taking them around, showing them community assets in Tampa Bay before COVID hit. We've toured the airport, the port, Amely Arena, Camels, some of our local manufacturers. And it, and it lets our CEOs kind of meet each other. And it, great things happen when they, when they meet each other and they, they strike up business with each other because they didn't even know. Two of these people didn't even know that the other one existed until I had lunch with them before we went on this event. So, here we are. This is out of order, but this is at The Point. You probably recognize that. And this was kind of a little West Pasco day. And we just did it in the afternoon. So, we had, I had seven CEOs in. And we toured, toured The Point Distillery. This is a very cool prohibition distillery. So, that's kind of an oxymoron. But they have two of those. And this, this company is amazing here in Jack's district. And I was really grateful for them to, to open up and give us this, this tour. And so, here we are at a company called Two Six. Another amazing one in your district, Jack. It's so nondescript in the front. But they grow crystals for lasers. And it's one of the only ones like this maybe in the world. There's, I think there's another one in the United States somewhere. But they, they have an amazing, they pull a lot of electricity and, because the crystals grow for months in a very, very expensive machine. I can't, couldn't show all of it because it's, it's Department of Defense and there's security there and everything. So, this is their generators. And so, if the power goes off, they have to have a massive amount of electricity to be made. And they have a backup for the backup. Because if, if they lose power for even a few seconds, they have to stop and rebuild all their, all their crystals. So, I want to thank them for the tour. I think they're going to be expanding. So, we got to get David over there. But something I do maybe a couple of times a year, oh, and we toured the jail. Our last one before COVID was, we toured the jail. And these guys all really appreciate it. You have Metler Toledo, Touchpoint. We have Dan Tang from, is it GTS? I think he's probably one of our fastest-growing companies. He's about to open up in four countries. So, he'll be in about eight or nine countries here soon. We have Miyota. We have Pharma Works. One company I'm trying to recruit here. So, I'm very excited about what we do. Okay, next picture. This is in Commissioner Bradford's district. When I was coming back from one of those drive-arounds, this is the, in the next picture, this is a Kubota dealership. I don't think they're allowed to do this, but I know they're not allowed to put those out on the highway. And I did talk to Commissioner Bradford. And he does want Code to keep their eye on this and not let them put their tractors out in the right-of-way of US 41. Okay, next. This is a picture of June, from June 15th of our car wash on 54. And then, the next picture is what it looks like today. That's your district. And apparently, you know, I can't say anything in other people's districts, Seth. So, I'm happy to pass this on to you. But this is what's happening all around the county. Okay? This is literally what is happening all around the county. Can you, can you go back to the one from 2015?
Did you submit this already?
I can't because apparently, I'm not, I don't know. As a Joe Blow citizen, I can turn in three a day. So, maybe this is one of mine. I'm turning this in right now. But I, you know, I know I keep harping on this, but it's just, it's just, we're just slipping backwards.
What's the color of the building today? Are you right back?
That one. Clean machine. It's kind of gray. You see the trees between the two buildings are gone? And there's a lot of stuff gone.
There's a noticeable change there.
Yeah. Okay. Also, I wanted to ask Terry, just rolling on up to 12. There was a, a meeting last night in Holiday. I wasn't able to go because I had an old neighbor who had, we had a birthday party for. I was wondering how well it was attended, how well-attended it was. And is it possible to have, did you have one in Trinity? Because I, I think you had something nearby. And my husband was going to go when I was in Utah. But if not, I'd like to schedule another one.
Niktariya Fido's Planning and Development. There's a number of conference of plan update workshops happening around the county this summer. So far, we've had two. The first was at St. Leo University. These are county-wide events. They're not necessarily, you know, prescriptive to the particular region that they're being held in. But we had one up in St. Leo. Then, yesterday's was the second meeting or the second workshop. Roberto Besserol, the Assistant Planning and Development Director, was in attendance.
Commissioner, Roberto Besserol, Planning and Development. So, yesterday's meeting was very nice. They were about 60 to 70 people.
Wow.
Yeah, it was very good. They, they have some activities that people were excited. They participated. They showed like some apps through the phone. And they survey their input. Next, they did a, some write-on. And people kind of scattered throughout the room to participate on, on their input for what are their, their vision, I guess, for whether transportation or other elements. So, it was, it was a good turnout.
And so, where are your next ones?
Those are currently being planned out. There's one being planned in Hudson. There's another that's been talked about at a few public meetings, possibly in Shady Hills. There is one, I believe, that's Wesley Chapel, Zephyr Hills later this summer. And I believe there's one more. Off the top of my head, I can't remember.
I hope you can do one on the 54th Quarter on Trinity Odessa area.
I think Land O' Lakes was another one that, that.
So, we're skipping Trinity Odessa?
I can double-check to see if there is one scheduled for that area.
Okay. Well, if, I'd love to have one there. You know, go to the Starkey TLC, maybe. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All set? All right. Let's take a break for lunch.